9/2015 and with that, we want to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Would somebody like to read the approval of the agenda?
I move the agenda Monday, November 9th, 2015. Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Grayton, is there a second?
Second.
Grayton, this is a roll call.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Anholt.
Aye.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
President Laberty.
Aye.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Dr. Buck, for the superintendent's report.
Yeah, great, thanks. We have a number of items to highlight this evening. The first one is, we're pleased to help celebrate the 10th anniversary of the Cops and Kids Reading Program. It's a key component of QUOTA International of Cedar Rapids. The reading program's a partnership with area law enforcement to support literacy among students and foster positive interactions with police officers. Through this program, QUOTA has also donated over 41,000 books to Cedar Rapids and Marion Police Departments to then share with students. The reading program's currently happening at Harrison, Johnson, and Taylor Elementary Schools. Cedar Rapids Police Sergeant Mark Andries and Officer Shannon Sampson and Glenn Keeler regularly share their time and energies to read to students at these schools. And each student receives a QUOTA donated book each year. It's a wonderful outreach and I'm pleased to have the opportunity to highlight tonight. And in addition to that, we have a number of QUOTA volunteers with us this evening. So would you guys be willing to stand and just wave a... If I... Thank you. Nice job. Good work. Thanks for coming out. Let's see here. The district's annual progress report's now available on our website. This report contains information about the district's progress on annual goals in the academic areas of reading, mathematics, and science. It also includes information on the district's graduation and attendance rates. In addition, we've included a link to the Iowa Department of Education website where more specific academic data can be found. And I did take some time last week to drive around in that website. So if you want to know information about the district, that is a very helpful website. And it's right off the Department of Education's site. So I was pleased to see something helpful from the Iowa Department of Education.
It's gotten better in the last few months?
Yeah, it's improving. That's what I understand. New leadership. Congratulations to our newest Blue Zone Schools, Arthur Elementary and Jefferson High School. Cedar Rapids Community School District is now up to 14 Blue Zone Schools, so that's a point of pride. And I have a couple of items to share tonight highlighting the Iowa BIG program. In September, the Cedar Rapids Public Library began a partnership with Iowa BIG to offer weekly STEAM classes known as Hack Senior and Hack Junior that focus on coding skills. So the program's in collaboration with Washington High School and McKinley Middle School. Hack Senior students will eventually become mentors for a Hackzilla program that will take place at Johnson's STEAM Academy. And I said a lot of words there and we'll have to ask some other experts if we want additional details, right? Also, Iowa EdCamp is coming to Cedar Rapids. Iowa BIG will be a host site for the Saturday, February 13th, 2016 event. EdCamp sessions focus on discussion and problem solving. The program's intended for educators, students, parents, board members, policymakers, and community members. The use of laptops, tablets, smartphones, and other electronic devices is highly encouraged. And best of all, the registration is free and available at edcamp.org. Our middle school and high school vocal teachers recently teamed to organize and host the district's first Women's Honor Choir. The event blended the voices of student singers as a way to help cultivate interest in current eighth graders to continue to sing when they come to high school. A similar men's festival had been held last winter. And then the last comment of the night here, I'm also pleased to congratulate the 65 high school student musicians who were chosen for Iowa All-State Music Festival happening later this month in Ames. These students are from Jefferson, Kennedy, and Washington High Schools and they'll represent us in the All-State Choir Band and Orchestra. And if you've never been to the All-State concert, it is well worth your time to make the trip to Ames, having been there a few times in my life. So with that, lots of great news and lots of good things happening in the district.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Buck. Are there any board reports tonight? Gary?
Just an update to the board on our outreach with listening posts, communication. I've had contact with the Cedar Rapids Education Association and the City PTA. And both organizations are excited and enthusiastic about hosting some kind of a listening post. I'm waiting to hear back from both of those organizations on specific dates or possible dates. And then we're looking at a more of a general public opportunity, hopefully at the African-American Museum at some point. And that would be open more to the general public. So that's on the radar and I'll continue to update you as I get those dates finalized. And secondly, I will be sending out to the board, if you haven't already looked at it, the legislative booklet for IASB convention next week. And in it, you'll find the proposed legislative priorities and agendas, resolutions and priorities in that. Just a highlight of, as I look through it, I see as far as funding, the main emphasis is going to be following the law as far as giving us the allowable growth within the timeframe that they're supposed to. As far as level, it looks like we're just, what they're proposing is just adequate funding. They're not sending a percent to that. Appropriate and adequate funding. So with that, look forward to that coming in your mail tomorrow, email.
Thanks, Gary. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to communications, delegations, and petitions. And as we do this, always just a reminder to those that will come up and speak before us that this is a time to address the board. You'll be given five minutes. If you could let us know your name and your residing address when you do approach the podium, which is just right over here to my right. And this is not a time for dialogue with the board, so we definitely will listen to your comments and take that into account. And if we need to have the administration or one of us on the board follow up as necessary. So with that, Stephanie Arusha, would you like to take the podium?
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, so I can state my concerns over a couple of issues that my stepson has encountered over the past couple of, I'd say, six weeks. What I would like to talk about is the bullying policy. My stepson has been punched in the face twice in the past six weeks. We've met with the principal several times. We've done the bullying harassment documentation. We are following the appropriate procedures as far as I can tell from what everyone that we've spoken to. My concern is what is the consequence for the aggressor in the situation? We've gotten an apology when we met with the child, but as far as I can see, to a sixth grade student saying, "I'm sorry," I don't know how effective that is or how meaningful that is to them. The principal told me that the district had told them that they cannot do in-school suspensions. Some of their actions have been limited for, I don't know the reason. My child has lost contact hours in the school. He is on an IEP for reading and math. I'm concerned about the loss in progress that's going to happen now because of that. We've made tons of gains and now he's fearful to go to school. Friday after he was hit the last time, we were told by a neighbor that seventh and eighth grade students were going to jump him. He did not want to go to school today. If that was your own child, I think you would understand why. I'm very concerned that the intention is there, that there's a consequence for the aggressors, but there's really no follow-through. Also, I understand the 10-day investigation period. What happens if something happens to my son during those 10 days? What if he is hurt so bad that he's not able to communicate what has happened to him or how this started? I have another friend who attends the same school, it's at McKinley, and her son had a similar thing happen to him as well. He didn't tell anyone because he didn't want a big deal to be made of it. That bothers me. One of the reasons we were told is the day that he was hit in the face, it was a perfect storm. They were short-staffed. People had meetings to attend to. I understand that. I'm a teacher myself. I know subbing is hard to find people to fill in those spots, but when safety is a concern at a school, I've grown up in Cedar Rapids, McKinley's always been known to kind of be a rougher school. How can we make it safer for all of our children? It's a great school. The teachers have been very helpful. What can we do to make it better and safer for them, is my question? What consequences do we have? If he was in the street and got punched, there would be a consequence. I don't know what's happening at the school. It's not communicated, and that's my biggest concern. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments. All right, and next, Chelsea Bryant Watson?
Thank you, guys, for having us here. To piggyback what Stephanie said, I'm living at 1930 Beaver Avenue Southeast. I made an executive decision to let my son go to McKinley. I've trusted the system. I've trusted Cedar Rapids system to do what is needed for my child to be able to feel comfortable about going to school. And unfortunately, it changed. He's not comfortable. That's my nephew. He's not comfortable. And at this point, my questioning to you guys is, what is the strategy behind changing and altering the disciplinary action in the school system? Because we get the feedback from McKinley that things have changed where you can't do what you used to do. We understand that. We respect that. As parents, we can't do what we used to do growing up, but there has to be an alternative to make it safer for our babies. I'm here as a true advocate. I mean, our children are good kids. You can go to that school right now and they got nothing but great reviews. As the tears fell today for our babies, of them leaving McKinley today, the teachers cried right with us. I mean, I'm talking about true tears. How are you guys going to address the issues with the staff and teachers being afraid of the inner schools and in the low-poverty area? McKinley is not like the ordinary schools all over. We're living in a poor area. The parents are not like parents like us that are dedicated to make it right for our babies, to show true structure. And we gotta do something different. We're depending on you guys. I'm speaking for other parents that may not even have the courage to be here tonight. I'm here tonight not feeling my best. Honestly, I'm not feeling well at all because of this situation, but I have to stand up. My son told me, he said, "Mommy, go there, please. I know you don't feel well, but go there. I'm here." How do you get more parents involved by having more stricter laws to make the parents accountable for the children's mistakes? We gotta figure it out. I mean, be honest with you, you guys have been to school for this. A lot of parents like us have not. So we gotta get it together. We gotta come up with a game plan to make this work and safer for our babies. When your staff is threatened by the safety from the children and supposed to be ensured that the safety for, how do we supposed to be ensured that our safety for our children gonna be there if your staff is scared? We got the staff telling us that they're scared. They're scared of sixth and seventh and eighth graders. To me, I can't phantom the thought, but I understand what the world is. It happens. But we, as a society, gotta do something different. Uniforms, more foot patrol. We have lacking of foot patrol at McKinley. We walk through this school. Remember, my brother just tested it two or three days in a row. We can walk through the school. Students are everywhere, doing whatever they want to do. The safety is not there. If we came in and we look crazy and put some fear there, the alarms go off for them to look at us, not looking at the kids that's causing the issue. That's not being looked at. The cases, this case was given to us. Now, we're passing the case on to you guys. I'm depending on you guys. I'm depending on you guys because my babies are struggling. It makes me struggle every day to know that they may not feel comfortable at school. And these are learning kids. Check the records. Call the school. Look at them. Teachers would tell you what they are about. I'm speaking for all of the babies. So please, help us. Help us so we can help them.
Thank you for coming and talking to us and sharing that. And the administration is going to follow up more with you on that. Thank you. All right, next, we have Linda Topioka?
Topika.
Topika, sorry.
Thank you for this open forum where we can speak. I have a couple of concerns, and one of the concerns, I'm gonna piggyback off of what she just got to do. Mental health is a big concern, and I want to know how the district is going about providing to all of the students. Bullying is just a symptom of something else going on. So I'm wondering how the district is providing those services to our children. And my other question I have for the board is, does the district have a process for recruiting educators of color?
Absolutely, and I appreciate your questions. And as I had mentioned earlier, we will definitely have the administration follow up with you on that very good question, actually both of the questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm thinking, did I bring this up here or did somebody else? Okay.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Lawrence Wanclousky.
Yeah, Lawrence Wanclousky, 4234 Morrell Road, Northeast Cedar Rapids. I realize sometimes when I come here, I'm not always, or don't come across as being thankful for everyone's hard work in it. But I truly do appreciate everyone's hard work, even though I disagree with decisions or things that are presented. I do realize that it is a lot of work to go, to produce a lot of this, and you have a lot on your plates in it. And I won't mention anything other than this, and I mean, I even appreciate the singing voicemail messages that I've received in it. They make my day in it. So anyway, in the past, you know, I've talked about the litmus test for policies and that. And there's also, I've been thinking about this, you know, and this partly brings up, because Dr. Benson, when he was here, a couple of times, he made a comment and no one even challenged, made a comment about whether something was legal, how everything is done legal within the district. Well, there's actually three components. There's whether something's legal, whether something's ethical, and whether something's right or wrong. If we look at bills that our Congress makes, yeah, they're legal, but you know, some of them, I think we're gonna obviously say that benefit them. We have to question their ethical, whether they're ethical or not, and you know, the right or wrong. You know, an example of that is, you know, I go pick my daughter up from school, going south on Wannig and that, and you know, the school buses and other drivers, they don't stop to let people cross the street. Or if someone wants to go northbound and they're going southbound, they won't let them out even though they have nowhere to go in front of them. They'll just block the spot there. Well, it may or may not be legal, but it's definitely not right, you know, just to stop somebody there. You know, and I know a couple of weeks ago, a comment was made about how our legal counsel looks over our stuff and that. And I'll tell you, I have nothing but high praise for our legal counsel. I know them personally, and they are very ethical people, and I have, you know, nothing, no gripes with them at all. But you know, and I also have to say, I don't care about all the policies because there are certain ones, I'm not, I could provide zero benefit for, like how we invest our money in it, you know? So it's more the ones that affect myself personally and others personally, and you know, other parents. You know, one of the things is, when we have ambiguous or incomplete policies, they actually hurt, or people of lesser means are put at a disadvantage because they, for them to challenge them, that is, you know, it's harder for them to do. To me, what makes something legal is whether it's been challenged through the court system. I think you look at our traffic cameras downtown, that's probably, you know, one example that comes to mind. We don't want to be in a position of people having to challenge the school system in court. And that's sort of why I brought up the litmus test also. And also, you know, the process we have in place for challenging decisions. You know, it's not always fair, and you know, we're asking people to undermine decisions that are made by people who work for them. That's hard to do for long-term relationships. And if your boss continuously told you or did something wrong, you know, that'd be hard for you to trust them. And so something's gotta be done there to, you know, make it a more, a fairer process and that, so people can really be heard. The other thing I wanted to comment about is, you know, the contracts, you know, some of them are very well-written, some of them are more than, are just, seem like they're no more than a handshake agreement written down. And I'd like to see that, those that are, like the handshake agreements, as we go through them over the next few years, let's just raise the quality of them so they're more than just that handshake agreement. And maybe some of them, that's all they're intended to be, and there's something there that I don't understand. That's strongly a possibility, but anyway. Okay, well, thank you very much, and go Cougars.
Thank you very much, Lawrence. I appreciate your comments. All right, and lastly, but not least, we have Bernard Clayton. Please approach the podium and provide your name and residing address.
I'm Bernard Clayton. I live at 1604 Sixth Avenue Southeast. Almost don't have to get up and talk, 'cause a lot of what I want to talk about has already been talked about. But I would like to say, there needs to be a clear definition of the use of policing schools, not no ambiguous thing, any legal function, and that I understand that police are working out so well that the students are jumping on them now. So that fear of intimidation, and police came into the schools during the Civil Rights Movement when black people began to go to school because white people thought that black people protesting for their rights were wrong. So police came to schools during that period. And I know it's even Cedar Rapids as an increase of black students in school increase, that's when the police presence came about. It could be purely coincidental, but who knows? And the next thing I would like to talk about, the school district needs to seriously consider doing a curriculum for conflict resolution, needs to develop a curriculum on that, but I know everybody complains about that we don't have no money. This year, so far, we done lost two young men. And I don't know if they important to us, but maybe if their mailing content was a little bit lower, maybe they would really be important to us. But I'm assuming that no one that I'm talking to is that way. I'm assuming that y'all are all loving, caring people. I'm gonna give y'all the benefit of the doubt. And this school did about 20 years ago, when Nelson Ellen worked for the school district, I looked through some books that y'all had for conflict resolution and such. But teachers are scared, were scared to do it. Now, I'm not saying no one shouldn't be scared of anything, 'cause you can't store up courage. But if you're working in education and you're working with kids and you scare your kids, you probably don't have no business being in a, but you have no business teaching. And see, I went to school in St. Louis, and one of the first things I was told of coming from school in St. Louis, my first day in college, and self-professors told me that because I did not go to school with white people. I was told that I was culturally deprived. But that's why I told, but there were certain things that they knew how to handle. And when I went to school and said, "I know, everything's different," the four years I went to high school in St. Louis, one student in one to 10 high schools in St. Louis died by gunshot during the four years I went to school. One person died in school. Okay, so I'm not gonna pretend the school, I'm trying to pretend where I come from was perfect, but we knew how to lock doors, we knew how to bring parents to the table and bring the parents to the table and sit them down in the room and talk to them. Those people, despite the culturally deprived circumstances that we were in, you know, they know how to do this stuff. And this is supposed to be one of the greatest places in the world. Lot of smart people. I bet you y'all got, I bet you for, y'all probably got, that's about, probably 300 years of knowledge in this room, just in academics. I'd be willing to bet that. So hopefully, y'all can put that to use and you will get a curriculum for conflict or resolution, 'cause bullying can easily turn into murder. In 1963, at Justin High School, there was a guy who constantly bullied a guy. And one day, that guy brought a gun to school and he shot the guy. He didn't kill him, but he paralyzed him. Okay, so, and those were two white people that did that. So this school district knows something. I don't know if y'all have any historical memory about that, but y'all should check that out. So we've had violence in school before. So what we have to do is learn how to deal with, 'cause bullying can easily turn into murder. And I'm gonna leave y'all with that. I don't want to lose them on five minutes. I'm gone.
All right, is there anybody else at this point that would like to address the board? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next part of our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Are there any items that any board members would like to pull for further discussion or clarification? Mary?
Yep, I'd like to pull BA 16128, which is the agreement with RSP, and just have Brad kind of walk us through that, or someone from the administration walk us through that.
Yeah, so I can, I'll field this one, and if somebody else wants to dive in here, I'd welcome that too. So that's the work with RSP, especially as it relates to student enrollment and enrollment and future planning. And so one of the things you're gonna hear a little bit later here is sort of the four goals that we're gonna try to flesh out between the board and superintendent goals. And one of those is facilities. And so the reason this appears here is, we've worked with RSP before on enrollment information. And one of the most powerful parts of the enrollment information from RSP is, they can not only tell us what the grade levels of our students is or are, but where they're located. And so this is really sort of a two-pronged thing. One of the prongs will be, as we look forward to facilities and the impact of Highway 100 and some of those kind of things, they can give us some coaching on what is currently happening with enrollment and where it's headed. And the second part of the conversation is sort of an initial discussion that's underway about this net loss out of open enrollment students. And so one of the things this will also provide us is a sense for where those students live, because part of that conversation is, are they, are the students sort of bleeding across near the borders of, because it's primarily Lynnmore and College Community, that's the biggest chunk of sort of the open enrollment out. Are they located in other parts of the district? And if so, what might strategies look like to try to kind of stem that? So reason for RSP at this time is really to look at enrollment data around sort of the facilities conversation and the sort of net open enrollment out conversation, so.
So the last time we had them do a report, I think it was five years ago, and that, so is this an update to that, or is this a more comprehensive?
Yeah, so this will update that information, so we'll get a better sense for where our students are, what grades they're in. And also, are we getting some re-greening in some of our older neighborhoods? I mean, so it'll be kind of all of that. I mean, so it'll be kind of all of that kind of conversation, primary for, for facilities. But yeah, this is a good question.
Okay, thank you. And then John, I had one more. BA 16129, which is the NTS Horizons Transportation Services. I just want to commend Horizons and the district for forging that relationship. When we were doing the Pebble Levy Campaign, we kind of all looked at all these expenses and I was surprised by the number of, or the amount that we were using in cab services to get our students to places where they needed to go. So big kudos getting that agreement together. Other than that, I didn't have anything else.
Anybody else with any comments or items they'd like to pull for discussion? All right. Seeing none, does somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second.
And this is a roll call due to the personnel report.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Meisterling.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
Director Humble.
Aye.
President Laberty.
Aye.
Great, thank you. And we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is under learning and leadership. We're going to just switch things a little bit. Oh, are we good now? Okay, awesome. Terrific. Well, we'll keep it the same. So Mary Ellen, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you to discuss the AP Capstone project.
Thank you. Kennedy High School is one of two schools in the state of Iowa that has been selected to pilot an AP Capstone program this evening. Jason Klein, the Kennedy principal, and Dr. Michael Ayers, our AP Capstone teacher from Kennedy High School, will be talking with us about the program. And also we have some students that are engaged in that program that will be sharing their reflections on the program. So, welcome.
Yes, good to come up here too. All right, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the school board for allowing the district to have such flexibility in course, course offerings. This is an opportunity that we received late in the school year last year and had to add to the course of study booklet late. And we're able to do that because this district does allow that kind of flexibility. A lot of school districts don't and we get to take advantage of that. Mary Ellen's wrong about one thing, but because I told her the wrong information, we are actually the only school in Iowa that has this. There were two schools offered it, but I found out today that the second school must not be doing it because we're listed as the only school that is doing it right now in the state of Iowa. The full program will be opened up to all schools next year. So we will be in competition with other schools starting next school year. In 2014, the college board approached us at Kennedy about being one of the two schools in Iowa to offer the AP Capstone program. The program, as you can see on the screen, consists of two courses, the AP Seminar course and the AP Research course. I was very excited about this opportunity because I taught in an international baccalaureate school. And international baccalaureate has something called the diploma program. And this is very similar to that diploma program. It's an end-of-year or end-of-high-school program that signifies that a student has put a significant amount of effort into AP-level courses, along with taking these two other AP courses for two years. We felt like this was a really good opportunity for Kennedy students in terms of academic rigor. We felt that this was the type of thing that could benefit all the curricular areas in the school. And so we, we jumped on board pretty quickly. In fact, I had three teachers who wanted to teach it, so I had to select a teacher who, to be the pilot, even though it meant going to training over the summer and losing summertime. Dr. Ayers stepped up and took on this opportunity and has really done a great job with it. We had over 20 students who enrolled in the course the first year, which we were excited about, given that it's more work. That's always a good thing when high school students say, yes, I'd like to do that. It's a great opportunity for them, but it was, it was something that they were entering in sort of the dark. And so really proud of them standing up. As you can see, this is from the AP brochure. The students can earn what we call an AP Capstone diploma if they complete both the seminar course and the research course. And they score a three or higher on each of those exams. And they also score a three or higher on four AP courses. We have many students at Kennedy that have done that. And so we have students who will be on track, tracked to get that AP Capstone diploma after next school year. Students who don't take four AP courses or pass the four AP exams have the opportunity to take, get the AP Seminar and Research certificate. So there's a reward for students who complete this two-year program regardless of their other AP offerings that they've completed. And we think that, again, it's a very good opportunity for them. I'm going to allow Dr. Ayers to explain how the AP Seminar course is going at Kennedy right now. It's a, it's a new year. It's a new program. It's a new opportunity. We did not start the AP Research course. That'll start next year with the students that are currently in Seminar. In order to take the Research course, you have to take the Seminar course. And then I have two students here, Hannah and Finn, and they're going to talk to you about the projects that they're working on in class.
I want to share Mr. Klein's, thanks for letting us offer this course. I think it's a really great opportunity for our students. I want to add a little bit of detail to this. It's really, it's different from the way that other AP courses work in that other AP courses, the score is derived entirely from an exam where students sit in May for a few hours. And this is one of the key differences that's going to be pretty interesting going through this for the first time. We do have an exam, but that is one of, one of three performance tasks that students are asked to go through. The exam will consist of questions. They'll be given some documents where they're asked to evaluate them in terms of credibility, bias, that sort of thing. But then the other two pieces are the pieces that we're working on from January forward, which are two performance tasks that are both research-based. One of them is individual and one of them is in a team. Students will create, there are, there are multiple components to each of those, including individual papers, a presentation, a defense for each of them. And then those are recorded and uploaded so that while I give a score for those, the college board is able to verify the score after the fact. So really, our job, working up to January, is to prepare students for those other performance tasks that they'll be starting in January for real. So up until now, what we've been doing is sort of start off with a few weeks at the beginning, doing some of the basic, we're talking about bias, talking about building arguments, doing, we did a scavenger hunt to try and get it, like around the building to get a handle on how do you think about what your available resources are when you're trying to answer a series of questions. And then also, one of the main priorities that I find in teaching this course so far is helping students to develop strategies for working in teams, which because of the nature of other AP courses really isn't a necessary priority. But really, for this course, it clearly is. Another recent activity that we did was to take apart, I, I took an argument that I had found from a magazine, took it apart paragraph by paragraph, offered it to them to try and reassemble it in groups after it's been all mixed up so that they can get a sense of how do you sequence an argument? How do you see the different pieces of this fitting together? I think those are the main, those are the main things that I want to hit. Students are here to talk about the projects that they've been working on up to now. They're on the second practice team research project. So that's where they're at right now. Do you want to?
Hannah and I are both juniors at Kennedy High School and we're working on a project for AP Capstone. We're looking at the, the Dream Act that's currently being assessed by Congress to see if that's an effective way to handle the immigration problems in America.
And one of the things that we have tried to do throughout our process of making our individual reports and our team arguments is that, as Dr. Ayers said, we have to look at the credibility and the bias and the different points of view that you can find from all of the different sources that you can find. With today's technology, you can go on to Google and find something that someone that has no idea what they're talking about has created. Or you could go on and find a different source just as easily that could be peer-reviewed or have a lot of really relevant information by someone who has a lot of credibility. So a lot of the beginning part of what we've been doing the past week or so has been with our new project, finding credible sources that give good information that's actually relevant to what we're talking about.
Another thing that Dr. Ayers brought up was that a, a main focus of the course is building arguments based on the research that we conduct. That's, I found that a very important skill that we learned that isn't focused on in many other courses that I've taken. And that can be applied to, for future college and other high school courses.
Yeah, as he said, the AP test at the end of the year is actually kind of done throughout the year. And at the end, there's one portion of the test is actually sit-down, take your test. But the other part is building your argument and creating an offense for it, which is a lot different, we actually had this discussion today, than most AP courses. Your teacher has so much information to give you that you have to know that's been outlined for you. But in this class, it's really more, what are you interested in? What do you want to research? And no matter what you're researching, you're still learning the same skills, like finding arguments, developing a line of reasoning so that your arguments aren't scattered and it makes sense. And so that's really helpful and we all feel that can be applied to other future courses, especially in college, finding arguments. And it's giving us life skills that will help us in college, more than memorizing facts or something like that.
Well, that's all for me.
I have one more thing. After the first report, we're on our second kind of report. It was definitely interesting to see all of the mistakes that we had made, which was pretty much, oh, I should have done this, oh, I shouldn't have used this source, oh, I did not know how to make a bibliography or cite my sources in a paper. So in a way, this course is also helping us learn from our mistakes and how to be organized, use time management, because a lot of this stuff is kind of done with a group, so you have to rely on other people, which you don't have to do in a lot of classes. And so it's helping with other skills, not just research and everything, but time management and collaboration and stuff too, so.
That's wonderful. Does anybody have questions of, yeah, Nancy?
I wanted to know, you said there's 20 students that are currently enrolled?
What do you have 20?
How are they selected to participate in this Capstone?
We went, we went to the sophomore class and presented this to them. And then we identified students who had been successful in AP classes already as sophomores and put a little bit of squeeze on them to urge them to, to give it a shot. Because what I've, what we found is if your brother or sister took the AP class, then you take the AP class. Well, no one had taken this before, so there was no word of mouth to spread. So we really had to directly go after students. I think we initially had about 40, 45 that were, that came to those meetings and were interested, but it pared down over the summer. We expected it, I was actually expecting about 15, so I was happy to see 20 students stand up and try something really new. And really, a lot of work. And they're doing pretty good, I think. Sounds like they're on their way.
I can add something to that as well. In addition to whoever originally signed up for it, once we knew the list of who had signed up for it in about, I'm going to say April or May, I went around, I think it was in May that we knew that I was going to be teaching it. So then I went around and met with the, pulled them out of other classes for a second to introduce myself, give them an idea of maybe what we were going to be doing. Then I also worked with some of the counselors, as Mr. Klein said, some of the people who... Sorry.
Hard piece.
I didn't want to crowd you.
Yeah, I was.
Okay, good. Now I've got the thumbs up. Because sometimes the way we know that it works with AP classes where if, if we're already in a friend network and I know you're taking the AP class and then maybe I'm going to take the AP class, that I worked with a couple of counselors to identify some students whose coursework would suggest that maybe they would be good at this and maybe would want to try it out, even if for social reasons or again, they're not in the networks, maybe it's an issue of low SES or other lesser represented groups. So I went around and met with, and the counselors met with, we had different strategies for different students of what's going to make them most comfortable and not feel like, whoa, who's this person I don't know pulling me out of class, telling me to take a class I didn't sign up for. But that was on our radar as well as we were trying to, because I think that we started off with 17 students and maybe one dropped and we added four, something along those lines.
That's great. Mary?
Great program and great presentation from the two of you. Thank you for sharing your evening tonight and, and telling us about this program. So when you talk about, we're the only school in the state of Iowa, but you said next year then you're going to be in competition with, what does that look like? Paint that picture for me.
Well, it depends. If schools can opt to offer this course or not. So it depends on whether schools choose to offer them or, or not to. I don't know what the conversation's been at the other schools in Cedar Rapids. They have, but we'd be, we'd be willing and very excited to offer assistance to them in getting them going as well, Washington and Jefferson.
Great, thank you.
There, I think that there is, although we can check on this, when I was doing the training, I asked about this in August. And I think although it's going to be open up to whoever wants to apply, I do think that there is still going to be an application process for other schools. And so if other schools want to offer it, I think probably they should be looking at whatever that application process is within the next, I'm not sure what the timeframe is, but our AP coordinator probably has that information.
This is cost, is this additional cost to the district or?
There was a training cost for Dr. Ayers, but I thought it was worth it.
Oh, yeah.
No, but there's no, the program itself does not entail a cost.
Okay.
It's simply, there's a requirement that the teacher of the course be trained in the AP program for this because it's so new.
You know what I really like about our district and I think the district also for allowing this flexibility is, this is project-based, another continuation project-based instead of curriculum-driven. And it's much more engaging for our students to participate in classes such as this. So thank you for stepping up, Dr. Ayers, and, and being the guinea pig, if you will, and doing the hard work to make that happen. Great.
Nancy?
The breakdown of the students, how many males and females and also do we have minority students participating in this program?
Give me a second. Male, female, I think it's roughly 50/50, although I'd have to, I mean, I'd have to check on that.
You do a count tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll do a count. I think that students of color, about 25% of that 20 students seems right to me.
Awesome. Gary?
Again, great presentation. I'm glad that you stepped forward and volunteered to do it. And I commend AP for also moving forward with the program. I think from my understanding, it's, it gets at a lot of the gaps that the current AP classes are not providing. I know you talked a little bit about you had worked in a district that had the baccalaureate degree. I've, I've had some exposure to that. And I, I believe it's a, it's a strong program that would go, I've heard that it's actually, you can, it can be geared all the way down into the elementary schools. But it gets at more of the, the kind of project-based, thought-provoking, real-life experiences. I think it's, it could be something that our district could be at least investigating. I know it's costly because of the training components, but maybe it can be started as in a few schools or at a school or whatever, because I think it's a worthwhile program. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just, you know, I have the, the opportunity to work at the university in higher ed for a long time. And the students both mentioned that this is exactly the type of work that college professors are saying more and more of our first-year students coming in from high schools need to be successful at that next level. And it's whether it's at the two-year level or, or at the four-year level. And we're also hearing it from the business community. And we see it in our, in our Iowa Big Program and we see it in other project-based sorts of programs that we do. So I as well am very happy that college board has stepped up and said, this is really part of that 21st century learning that we need to have that's meaningful to students, it's measurable, it's unique, it's not just sit and get types of education. So again, congratulations to both of you for stepping up and being willing to do this and to the administration for taking this on. And I do hope that we have a, a chance maybe to talk to our other two high schools and see if this is an opportunity for expansion because I think that all of our students could benefit from this new option, as Mary said. So thanks to all of you again for spending your night with us, at least part of it, so.
Thank you.
Good luck with the program.
Thank you. Go Cougars.
You bet. And next, we're going to turn this over to Carla Reese to talk about the 2015-16 enrollment in the district.
It's always fun to follow the students. I think we should have let Director Laberty change that order again. So, anyway. So, anyway, welcome. I am excited this evening to share our 2015-16 student enrollment data. On October 1st of each year, we, that is affectionately deemed as our count date. And what that means is on October 1st, we pull all, count our students using Power School, basically, and share that information with the Department of Education. And that info, and that count becomes our official enrollment for that particular school year. We count our students who attend our district full-time, we consider them as like 1.0 or full-time students. And then we also count students who attend our district on a part-time basis and they're counted fractionally and maybe like point 1, point 2, depending on what level of service we provide to them. So I'm going to be sharing enrollment trends with you for those students who are in attendance at our buildings, as well as our certified enrollment numbers, which are the students we, the full-time students and then our fractional students together. So just a little bit of kind of what I'll be sharing. And if you have questions along the way, don't hesitate to stop me and I'll try, do my best to try to answer them. This graph shows longitudinally our enrollment over the past several years, and these are the students who are represented physically in our buildings. So they are in attendance, are counted as a 1.0 student, as I referenced earlier. And as you can see from the graph there, we've had an increase this year of 85 students over last year. So that is good news. And this represents students in our AK program through 12th grade. This graph shares, or shows our enrollment by, trends by level over the past four years, our few years, elementary, middle, and high school. One thing I want to draw your attention to, if you did the math, between last year and this year, you're like, well, that doesn't equal 85. The reason for that is this graph does not show any student, shared-time student or any of our off-site students. So it's students that are physically in like Arthur, Cleveland, Kennedy, those are physical buildings. So we saw a large increase, we saw about an 84 increase in students at the elementary level and just a little bit of information about that. Grades 2, 3, and 4 is where we saw the largest increase, with an increase of 75 students at 3rd grade over last year. So at the middle school, we saw a decrease. 7th and 8th grade remained relatively unchanged. We lost the most at 6th grade. So, and then at the high school level, I thought it was interesting as well, 9, 10, and 12 stayed fairly stable and we saw an increase at 11th grade is where we saw that increase there.
Can we ask questions during your report?
Yes, please do.
So when we lose students, like we have in that middle school category, are we doing exit surveys or some form of data collection to see why this is occurring?
It doesn't mean we've lost them necessarily out of the district. What it means is the incoming 6th grade student's class was smaller than the class that was there last year. It means that the 8th graders that went to high school was bigger than what came in at 6th grade. It doesn't mean they've left necessarily the district, it's just as we counted them, the numbers were different over the past year.
And the ones that do voluntarily leave the district, do we have a follow-up?
If, if, it depends. If they move, not always, it's possible that our buildings may follow up if, but if a family moves, we don't necessarily always follow up with them. Students who open and roll out of our district, we do try to follow up with them on a, every other year basis via a survey. We also disaggregate our enrollment data by free, the percentage of students who receive are eligible for free and reduced lunches. These numbers, as you can see, over the last five years have remained relatively unchanged. Starting on the left, we have elementary, the yellow bar is middle, the third bar there is the high school, and then the last orange bar is the district in general. And we've remained pretty close to that 47% for quite a number of years now. Another way we look at this data is by ethnicity and you can see the, we've had a slight increase in our Hispanic and our African-American by one percentage point from last year to this year. Not significant.
Takes me a while to process. Could you go back to the, the, yes, the high school is in the red, the deep red?
That is correct, yep.
Okay. Historically, I believe we've had, it looks like lower numbers than we have at the other. And historically, I've, I think I remember that it's a little bit more difficult to identify and they don't want to, it's self-reporting, right? And they don't, they don't like to notify or point out that they are.
These numbers are based on the parents who choose to fill out forms to get free and reduced lunch, free or reduced lunch for their students. Oftentimes, that happens at the elementary level at a higher rate than it does as students get older. Either parent, they don't want that, or the parent chooses not to fill the form out, or whatever the reason may be.
Just, yeah.
And that's not just in our district either, right?
Yeah. That's tends to be the case.
The number may be actually in reality higher than what it's actually showing.
And this slide right here, this is our certified enrollment. So what this is, this is a number of students we actually receive our state aid for, and this has our 1.0 students that, so the students who physically attend our building, as well as students that are shared time, students who are homeschooled or, and may attend a class or two with us, students who are in our homeschool program. All of those students are kind of lumped into, and all their fractional parts are lumped into this, this one number. And we've had an increase of 97 students from 1415 to 1516. So that's a nice increase. Oh, sorry, Justin. Questions was the last slide.
I like the numbers going up.
I like the numbers going up too. If I, if I could control that, I certainly would make that happen every year for you.
Gary?
Yes, we, early in the agenda, we talked about going on, looking for a bit on enrollment study. And I believe that the last study that we had, didn't they, weren't they indicating that we would probably see some growth this year? So it was a, just pointing out that it was, it's got to be a difficult chore to try to, to try to read a crystal ball, five years or four years in the, but the last, the last company did come fairly close to what we're, we're seeing.
Any other questions or comments? Great, thank you so much, Carla, for that information and I agree, it is great to see those trend lines moving upward. So, all right. Next, an administration item, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Buck.
Yes, so thank you. So you should have a document in front of you and you'll notice it is a draft. So I want to give you a little bit of background about what's contained in this document and then very much interested in your feedback about how this goes. So sort of two pieces to this, some of our board members that are new, you may or may not be aware of this process and, and this gets watched, you know, on TV as well, so this would probably be helpful. As it relates to the evaluation of educators, whether that's myself as superintendent, our administrators, teaching staff, and others, there's sort of two things that happen. One of the things that happens is people are broadly evaluated on standards that apply to their work. So in the case of administrators in the district, we're under the Iowa standards for school leaders, there are six of them, and they talk about things like vision and data, management, I mean, sort of variety of things that you might guess related to the work of administrators. And so when you do an evaluation of the superintendent, you will actually evaluate me on those six sort of broad standards. In addition to that standard work, which is very common practice, it'd be true of sort of all the people here in the front row, as well as our teachers and others, we also do in this district, they refer to it as IPDIP, which is a new thing to me. It's your Iowa profession, or your individual professional development plan, right? And we sometimes in other parts of the world call that IPDP, but here it's IPDIP. So the conceptual idea of IPDIP is this, so beyond those six standards, or in the case of teachers, there's actually eight standards, what are the, what are the things you're honing in on within that year that you're going to make progress, demonstrate a progress on? And so the document that's in front of you, yes, it would be used to support the six standards work, but in this case, this is sort of the IPDIP agreed-upon work between the board and the superintendent in this case. And so part of the intent here is to make that process a bit more public, so that our public understands what the priorities of the board are designated through a laser-like focus on the superintendent goals and then what, and then to give you some feedback along the way, or have you provide feedback along the way, because I will come back intermittently and give you progress updates on sort of how we're doing in this work. So I think, sort of thinking like that. So we have four big ideas on here and again, open to feedback on this draft about what you would like to see done as it relates to superintendent goals for this year. So where do these four big ideas come from? The answer to that is, so I started July 1st and I have met with just about anybody that's willing to meet with me and still have lots of other folks that I'm going to meet with, I'm sure. So we're talking community, community members, business leaders, teachers, our executive council member, I mean, so essentially, well, hi, I'm Brad, what would you want me to know about the district? I mean, it's that sort of a conversation. And really, so what has emerged, sort of based on all those things, and in conversation with you as individual board members, there seem to be sort of four big ideas that are emerging. And what I would want to stress is there are other goals that are still in play that we're still very much worried about. And so I'll tie hopefully one of those together in this first example. So we have this important idea on a promise of excellence for all. That's what we're trying to deliver on for all of our kids. And what I would say, and you've heard me say it many times, because I believe it to be true, the district and leadership in the district guided by the board and facilitated at the building level, we have chosen a significant amount of high-quality work that, when optimized, will lead to improved outcomes for our kids. So we are doing important continuous improvement work, we're doing that in PLC formats, we have our observation co-plan work, we have our equity works, we have a number of pieces up to the puzzle that really have chosen lots of great and important work in which to invest. At the same time, one of the things I hear is, so what does that actually look like put together in a way that's sort of consumable? So right now, at times, it feels like it's some big conceptual ideas sort of in pieces, but what, what would it look like to sort of put it on a page so it's more consumable? And, and that's oftentimes done through a theory of action. So what you see here is, it's in there, there's significant work underway and I've highlighted some of those things. So the idea is to designate a representative leadership group to be in this work, certified and classified staff, parents, community members, students. And as we've sort of kind of kicked this idea around, sort of at a global view with the cabinet, we're thinking a large group of people, 50, 75 people, a really truly collaborative group, and just sort of steep them in the work that's underway. And then if you were to say, so what are the big ideas? What are the big buckets that we think if we did this thing, and this thing, and this thing, and this thing, it would deliver on the promise of excellence for all? And so oftentimes, you do these types of activities, having done a little bit of this work before in life, it's oftentimes things like a highly skilled and diverse staff that receives frequent professional learning opportunities that are expected to apply to their circumstance. That's usually sort of a bucket around, because we honor that the people matter in organization. Another bucket in schools is oftentimes things like alignment of curriculum instruction and assessment with the infusion of equity and other important conceptual ideas. So I don't know what those things will necessarily be, but we'll pull that group together. Then we'll design a process to communicate, sort of, they'll come up with a draft of what this theory of action looks like to deliver on the promise of excellence for all. And then we'll try to set up a process that communicates those ideas to the buildings, to each of our buildings, usually through like BLT. So we'll send that to them, have them provide feedback on, does this look like sort of the right thing? Is it calibrated correctly? We'll send that back to the larger group and see if we can come up with a draft theory of action by the main board meeting. So we'll bring that to the board and we'll calibrate against sort of your thinking, is this really what we're intending to do?
And the BLT, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
So our building-level teams, so each of our schools have building-level teams and they have school improvement work underway, and so we'll send it back to them and say, can you find yourself in this narrative? Because one of the most important parts of a theory of action is every person that's impacted by that theory of action, whether you're a teacher, nutrition worker, custodian, parent, student, you need to be able to see yourself in this story. So where do I fit? And how does this whole thing, when put together, lead to excellence for all? So that's sort of the big conceptual idea there. So what we don't lose, so one of the board's goals is closing the achievement gap or the opportunity gap, that still remains a goal. And so what we'll do is we'll nest that into this work, because, I mean, it's heart excellence for all, is closing the opportunity gap for every child. And so we also have a goal around a more diverse workforce, we're taking action, and we have taken action around that, the needle has moved on that, and not as quickly as we'd like, but about, from about 3% to about 6% over the last few years. So progress, but of course, we'd like to accelerate that rate. So we, we won't lose that, it'll just get nested probably behind something around a highly qualified and diverse staff, if I'm guessing.
Can we ask questions?
Yeah, so that's, so I'm going to pause. Thank you. Thank you. Now, thanks, Mary.
So I know the BLTs, the building level, building level, I'm sorry, leadership teams are already, they're already in place. For this larger representative leadership group, how is, what, how do you pick people to be in that? And then how does that compare or contrast with the School Improvement Advisory Committee?
Yes, I think that's a conversation we could have tonight. I'd be interested in that coaching feedback. So we have, we have some important already identified board-appointed groups. School Improvement Advisory Committee, honestly, to me, would be a good sort of backbone group from which to begin, but I don't know that it's as diverse in its representation as sort of as being described here. There aren't students on that, are there? Tracer, are there? So, so if we wanted to go to School Improvement Advisory Committee route, which I think would be a good way to think about it, because they've already been steeped in some of these sort of schooly conversations, didn't want to get too technical there, right? Yeah. And, but then if the board would, so that's a board-appointed committee, so if the board would understand that we would probably send an invitation out to make it even more inclusive and a little bit larger, I think that'd be a group, a good one from which to begin. Or we could just do invitations to a broad spectrum of people and start a new committee. But given the timelines, that's, I don't know.
I agree. And maybe you start with the School Improvement Advisory Committee membership and build from there. What I've experienced though, and that's a large group, seven, 50, 60? And so I've been a part of that and I see that attendance is a big issue. So I think we have to make sure that there's some kind of covenant that whoever's going to participate, they actually attend and participate on a regular basis and not on a hit-or-miss basis. A lot of the people on the CIAT committee are just extremely busy and hard to nail down, so I just want to plant that seed in your head.
Good, good. Other feedback or comments?
On this first one, maybe a question, it's more maybe a comment. You know, if you're looking, and it's kind of scary if you're going out to a group, a large group, and asking them, where do you think you should go? And I would caution that sometimes leadership in a variety of different organizations and whatever, gives information and the idea is to lead them to where they already have or predetermined, if you get my drift, of where we're going. And so it's kind of scary to go out and what happens if, oh, they don't, they're not going in the direction you think? And I would just say, one of the comments that I hear many times is, well, they've asked me to be on the committee, they asked me to do this, but it was just a token and they already had the plan, they already knew where they were wanting to go, they just wanted us to rubber stamp. And so I just caution the fact that if you really want people to be engaged, they have to feel truly ownership to it, feel that they are, that they do have an input that's valued and, and result.
Yeah, agree.
Any other comments? Yeah, Mary?
I like it. I really like what you're, you're doing here, so, thank you.
I like the fact that you're engaging the students as well. I think that that's an important voice that we don't always get in this conversation. And I think, as is evidenced by the conversation tonight, hearing from the students is really a nice benefit.
Well, I think it's also important too, to include the community, because that's, that's really key in the process too. that's really key in the process, too.
Okay, the next one? So one of the other things that emerged, and I'm not exactly sure how to say this, so one of the things that emerged is, so some of the most important ambassadors, so the opening sentence there, I absolutely believe, our district's an excellent place in which to learn and to work. So one of the conversations I've been around many, many, many times is, staff are our best ambassadors about the district, because they know lots of people, and they interact and are around folks. And so it's sort of a variety of sentiment around, I don't know how to say it, how much pride there is in the organization. And so for this, for me, is, and I've, they've, this whole group's heard me say this, and they're like, this guy's campy, but it's okay. I've sort of thought of this as the lanyard project, and the reason I think of it as a lanyard project is this, and many have heard me say this example, but I would want to say it again, when, when I put on this lanyard every day, I couldn't be more proud to put on this lanyard every day. And when somebody stops me at a gas station or somewhere else, and they point to my badge and they say, hey, where do you work? I love to hold this up and go, I work for Cedar Rapids Schools, and can I tell you a great story about something that recently happened in Cedar Rapids Schools? Right? Which I think they think, oh, my gosh, I came to get, I came to get coffee, right? I mean, like, so, so the, to the extent that we can really help provide an opportunity for staff to, to talk about what Cedar Rapids Pride with me and this lanyard project, and to just help tell a great story. And that doesn't mean we don't have warts, so I don't want to, I've said this in other groups, I'm not trying to sell sunshine here that this is a completely perfect place, but it is a pretty great place. And so to the extent that we could do some work around Cedar Rapids Pride, or, or the wellness of our organization, I think that's the intent here, and it'll be sort of a similar type of format. The other thing I heard a lot about and continue to is just opportunities for improved communication. And I think improved communication is somehow nested under this sort of larger idea about what are we really trying to communicate about our, our district? And so we've actually already started that work. We've, we're pulling some internal stakeholders and some external stakeholders, and Grant Wood is, is helping facilitate that. We're gonna put a, a survey out to all staff, I think it's November twelfth, to get some feedback about the types of communication that would be most important to staff and for staff. So we're trying to, I think, lay the groundwork on the communication side and get some feedback around that, and then on to a larger conversation about this pride in our district. So, so you can kind of see the process there.
Any comments or questions, or?
I think it's a great project. But, you know, I just warn that it's one of those, it's one of those telling the whole world here. It's one of those, too, that you can't, they have to feel it. It, it has to be, it has to come internally, and I think as you work through that, you'll find, so how do we build that? And it isn't just telling them, just reminding, but they have to feel it internally. And I, as we see every board meeting, as we see some of our students and staff, we have a great district, and we're doing great work, and regardless of what the naysayers say, and we keep, it's tough being a teacher, because it seems like you can't get away from somebody saying, oh, you're not doing a good job from the media and from press and so on. We are doing a great job. And so I think the more we can do, I think it's a great goal, the more we can do to, to help point out those factors and get people to believe in themselves and what we're doing. It's, it's, it's nothing but a very good thing to do.
Other comments? Yeah, Kristen?
I like the partnership of the two themes from these two, CR Pride and Excellence for All. I think they feed into each other very well, they're very complementary, and finding a way to build on that because of what we're doing to create excellence for all, and create that pride for the, for the staff and everyone, and for the environment and the community.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see how these two things play out, sort of, they're, they're sort of like parallel work, but it may not end up being, I, I don't know. To Gary's point, I honestly don't know.
I don't know either, but I like, I like that they are complementary, complementary parallel paths, and, and working toward the same overall.
I think that the first goal will certainly help the second goal in the fact that staff and stakeholders in the district will have a much more clear idea of how the big rocks, the big ideas, the big buckets or whatever, are all working together. So we have these great things going on, as you've said, that are, you know, they're research-based, they're best practices, they're making a difference in and of themselves, but together they could even be more powerful. So just helping everybody see what that power could be, I think will definitely help with just everybody feeling onboard and prideful of, of what the work they're doing, so.
Any other comments?
So then the second part of that is that communication information I just gave you, and you see that at the top there, and so that's the quick overview of that. Then the last two on here are finances and facilities. And so this came directly as sort of two big ideas from board, kind of a conversation at this table and other places. So based on where this conversation goes with the legislature and state supplemental aid, we need to start thinking about what are our current finances. So I think, and I maybe have this wrong, we're gonna do a board work session, I think it's the second meeting in January about finances, because at that point we'll know where the governor sort of, you know, puts out his first idea about what's gonna happen with state supplemental aid. We may have sort of an indication for the legislature about what they're... Did I say? Oh, okay. I thought maybe they were signaling me about...
You're cheering your...
Did I call him, did I call him the governor?
You're optimistic.
Oh, okay.
You're cheering your...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, he's required, he's required to by law, but we've seen sort of how that crowd, he does follow the law. He does follow, in that particular instance. I don't know, I don't know what I'm, I need to stop talking. So I don't even know what any of that means, so. Yeah, but as, as it relates, so finances will be a critical part of this conversation. So I think what we talked about is, the second meeting in January will come and just lay out sort of where district financial picture is and what that means relative to sort of where the governor has started, and we may have an indication for the legislature, kind of where they're at as well by that point. And then just talk about what the implications are for that, and I don't know necessarily what that is right now, but I know that's a, a point of interest, so. That one's a little more.
Any, any comments on that? I think everybody sort of recognizes that's the big elephant in the room this year, is what will we get for finances, so, all right.
And then the, the next one there is the facilities conversation, and so this one is actually, I think we're talking about a board work session, the second meeting in April-ish, and so we'll be sure to get all kinds of information together. There's actually a document, I think it's available on our website, Shai went through and sort of gave feedback on each of the buildings and where they are in terms of how much investment we should consider continuing to put into them, sort of their overall, if we added, I think if the elementary had to have, what if it also had a media center-type space and something else? I'm not doing this well off the top of my head. But that document's available, and it would give feedback on sort of where we are with our facilities. We'll also try to feather in what's happening with student enrollment, we should have information by RS, from RSP by that time, and then also talk about what's Highway 100 potentially do, what's happening with growth in the district, et cetera, et cetera. And then, in my mind, from there, the board give direction on, so with all that information together, what would you like to see done next? And so you can direct what you'd like to see done at that point, so.
I think that's great. To me, I mean, we, we've had some reports, we've had some long-term, but then it gets put on a shelf a little bit, and I think we need to make sure we keep it in front. It doesn't mean, doesn't really mean other than it's a, take a look at, let's take the study off the shelf, let's see where it's at. Doesn't, doesn't mean at this point that we would, it would have any immediate effect, but I, I think it's most appropriate that we, we go back. We let the, the enrollment study and the boundary and, and that whole issue go way too long before addressing it, and I think it's one that needs to stay fresh and, and in front of the board, so thank you for putting it there.
Other comments? Any, anything else that anybody would like to bring up or see in this document of our priorities for the superintendent with the superintendent?
So this reasonably in line with sort of where you would see priority work for the next several months? Okay, okay, great, great. Work.
Thank you, Dr. Buck.
We'll get to work.
Administration and the teachers and everybody, so we're all in this together. Thank you. All right, any other last-minute items? All right, with that, we're going to, let's see, look at the board governance, policy issues. Are there any questions or comments?
This is the annual review we bring to the board on the policy of 508, 9, and 10, which deals with voluntary retirement incentive program. If you have any questions, we could answer for you.
Any comments or questions about the incentive programs for retirement? Gary?
Just for the general public, this is, this is just basically the same policy we've had in place for a number of years, with just modification with, to make it the dates and so on accurate. So in, in essence, it, there's not a basic change to the, to this, these policies.
Yep. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, you all have the school board calendar, and we do have a moment of silence? Okay.
Turn it over to Jill.
And Jill, we'll turn that over to you.
Thank you. Tonight, I would like the board to recognize an employee who passed away with a moment of silence tonight. Donna Miller was a great inspiration. She was a compassionate leader and important member of the Taft Middle School team. During her professional career, she served as food service assistant, secondary baker, and secondary cafeteria manager. School nutrition was more than a career, it was her passion. As an active member of the School Nutrition Association, she continually worked to improve her skills and earned a Level One certification. As a proud employee, Donna was best known for the following: her commitment to offer the highest quality meal to students, for being an outstanding team leader that was able to bring out the best in her employees, for having high employee retention by modeling teamwork, for her amazing relationships with students, staff, and parents, for her compliance and implementation of best practices, for her ability to embrace change and worked, working until she mastered the skills or process, and her, and for her efficiency and organized spotless kitchen. We are so fortunate, Donna dedicated her life's work to the Food and Nutrition Department. And for that, on November eighteenth, family and friends will gather at Taft Middle School to dedicate the cafeteria in appreciation and celebration of Donna's twenty-nine remarkable years of service to Taft Middle School and to the Food and Nutrition Department. Donna Miller was valued, respected, and loved, and she will be missed.
So if we could all just have a moment of silence for Donna? All right, thank you so much for sharing that with us. And with that, we are adjourned. Board members, you do have your evaluations and your calendars, and thank you for being here tonight.